Closed meeting number seventeen dash eighteen dash eight. Close session.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Miller Richards, second by Ms. Boyd. May I have a roll call vote, please?
This is Miller Richards?
Yes.
This is Ream?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
And the motion carries unanimously. So we'd like to add an additional information item as item ten B, instructional presentation, shortstop for success. May I have a motion to approve the agenda with this addition this evening?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards, second by Ms. Boyd. Are there any changes or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Have a motion to approve the minutes of the joint work session of the school board and city council meeting held on December fourth, two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Boyd, seconded by Ms. Miller Richards. All the... I'm sorry, Holmes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And then may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December fourth, two thousand seventeen regular school board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Boyd.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms., hold on one second. Ms. Wright, I'm not getting the vote thing.
Mm-mm.
So far, I haven't hit the online voting up just before.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
I just want to make sure we weren't...
Okay. It was going fast.
The motion carries unanimously. Now we go to favorite part of the meeting, recognitions. We can start with the word of the month, principled. It's presented by Walker Grant Center.
Good evening, Ms. Ream. I'm Dr. Melton, school board members and guests. Today, we have Walker Grant Center Head Start has the privilege of presenting the word of the month, which is principled. We will have a short video for you to view, and I'd also like to thank our education manager, Laura Dove, and our teachers for putting this together. So we're really proud of our little babies because it takes a lot for three and four year olds to get their attention for a long time. It goes in there somehow.
We celebrate each other good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was good. Okay. The Haven Make a Difference Fund of the Community Foundation, Dr. Thomas.
Madam Chair, Ream, board members, Dr. Melton, colleagues, guests, good evening. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Casey Hugh. Casey is with the Haven Make a Difference Fund of the Community Foundation. She is here with us tonight to make a few presentations on behalf of our staff. Mrs. Hugh.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here on behalf of the Community Foundation. We are a nonprofit that manages charitable assets, and we just hit our twenty-one million dollar mark. And that money goes back into our community in various ways. And tonight, we are presenting grants to teachers in the city schools, and these are for either professional development or really for the students, direct impact for the students. So we're really pleased to be here. So you have the certificates?
We do. Do you like to give them out or do you want us to?
Um, I think you were gonna give them out. And I'll just talk a little bit about the grant while you do that. The first one is Mary-Lise Kobe. I don't know that she's here tonight. Ms. Kobe received a grant for yoga in her classroom, so special needs students are receiving yoga. And she received this grant last year and was so successful, the committee that reviewed the grant really just automatically yes. The next grant... And the next grant was awarded to Barbara Donaldson on behalf of Hugh Mercer School, and this is for her Makerspace Lab. The Makerspace Lab is where the children go and creatively learn. Five thousand dollar grant that's being used for supplies and just to support the program. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yay. The last grant awarded was to Tara Lewis of Walker Grant, and she received five thousand dollars to support personal learning in the classroom. And this grant is purchasing laptops for her world geography classroom.
Nice. So on behalf of the board, I would like to thank everyone for coming this evening. At this time, we'll take a brief pause for anyone who wishes to leave. I'd also like to say thank you to the Haven for the... For that... The Community Foundation for that... Those donations. So we'll take a brief pause.
Thank you.
Anyone's welcome to stay, or you're welcome to leave.
Stay, it's fun.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so tonight we have comments from the Fredericksburg Education Association regarding the salary and fringe benefit proposal for two thousand eighteen nineteen. Ms. Cordell Robinson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am fighting the cold, totally under the weather, so there's... Can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
There's too many cameras in here. Good evening, Chairperson Ream, members of the board, Superintendent Melton, Deputy Superintendent Catlett, and others assembled. On behalf of the Fredericksburg Education Association, thank you for the opportunity to share our concerns relevant to the salary and benefits of all the employees of the Fredericksburg City Public Schools. I will be briefed this evening because we've heard these sentiments before. However, we continue to be excited as we work to make Fredericksburg City Public Schools among the nation's best. But we need something else other than excitement to keep par with the stringent and demanding issues of education, our students, and our career earnings. Yes, we have a new governor who has called for a two percent increase in salaries and more funding for education, but we are fighting a decade-long battle of educational reductions. We must do better to address this stalemate of low salaries and reductions in school spending. Virginia is a wealthy state, but it's difficult to prove this when it comes to the business of education. Solving the funding for education is challenging, both at the state and local levels, but we have to raise salaries and be reasonable in a state that is fourth in the nation in income. As a matter of fact, we rank forty-six in the nation when it comes to the salaries of educators, which is seventy-nine hundred dollars under the national average. I need not mention the struggle of the educational support personnel, which we know is in need of improvement. In addition, we now have a teacher shortage, past a thousand-plus vacancies, which affects our substitute pool or our ability to offer certain classes, among other things. Low pay is a major factor in discouraging the best and the brightest to the field of education. The experienced teacher pool is also being affected with the baby boomers moving toward retirement, you're looking at one, and others who leave for better pay without having recourse to additional jobs. We hold our breath this time of the year, when this time of the year rolls around. We know that this is a precarious time of the year when budget considerations emerge. Fredericksburg is not always the recipient of state funding like some of our neighboring localities, which makes the financial burden even more difficult to bear. We know how difficult it is when Dr. Melton faces down council and the small increases allotted to retirement and health cost dollars, yet we persevere in hope that it will get better. In eight of the past nine budgets of the Commonwealth, the state offered no designating funding to boost the pay of teachers or to fund some of the SOQ positions. It is simple. Virginia must be able to offer competitive salaries and more monies for educational funding. When will we strategize and begin the process to close the gap in order that educators may live on more than paycheck to paycheck or have improved programs to assist all students? Even as we continue to experience the challenges of society in general, we perform quite well in the Fredericksburg City Public Schools. With all of our schools fully accredited, we have to continue to offer high-quality instruction to drive Virginia forward in educational trends and leadership. In addition to this, we must also continue to meet the increasing demands of the tremendous growth that we are experiencing presently in Fredericksburg City. As such, we emphasize that all employees of the Fredericksburg family, including teachers and parents, deserve fair and decent compensation as we work to produce the best results for the students and the community. It is clear that we are devoted to our system, but we need to grow competitive wages as well. We continually thank Dr. Melton and Dr. Catlett for their support and commitment to evolve more competitive and rewarding salaries. We hope that the raise we see will boost our paychecks in areas other than health and retirement. We would love a brief vacation to Cancun, too. In preparing our students for tomorrow, we will continue to work to bring our students to international standards, continue to seek the best professional development, work harder to improve the dropout rate, and teach lifelong learners who are more than test takers. We ask that you consider a reasonable raise for the dedicated and deserving employees of the Fredericksburg School Division family. Thank you for the opportunity to address you and express... I also express our thanks for strong and growing programs and consideration for strong and tangible rewards for our workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have our consent agenda. We have a motion to accept the... Oh, yes.
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as presented with the following items: the Head Start approvals, the SBA Policy Services contract renewal, and the daily meal allowance reimbursement rate adjustment.
May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Personnel.
I recommend the board approve the personnel schedules as presented for January eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Boyd.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? I have a roll call vote, please.
This is Miller Richards?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next we have the appropriation of the prior year and general operating fund balance.
Recommend the school board formally appropriate, reserve, and designate the amount of one million, one hundred sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars from the fiscal year two thousand seventeen general operating fund balance for use in fiscal year two thousand eighteen as detailed in the following agenda item, and to include the amount of two hundred sixteen thousand dollars from the fiscal year two thousand seventeen SRF balance also as described in the agenda item. Further, I recommend that the school board approach city council formal appropriation authority, amending the fiscal year two thousand eighteen GOF and SRF budgets.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Miller Richards, seconded by Ms. Boyd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any additional action items? No? Next we come to informational items, beginning with the instructional presentation by Dr. Thomas.
Good evening once again. It is my pleasure to announce that we have students from both Walker Grant and James Monroe who will provide you with their perspective concerning the middle years program and the diploma program at each site. So first, we'll have our group from Walker Grant.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I'm Edward.
And I'm Emma Panetta.
We're both eighth graders from Walker Grant Middle School. And so my point of view of the middle years program, it's basically like an education system that's implemented to help prepare middle schoolers for... For success in college and the future, and to be successful in the workforce as well. Okay. So at first, when we became an IB school, I thought, we're gonna have to do so much more work and school's gonna be harder, but I soon realized that IB lets students be more independent with their schoolwork and use the knowledge they learn when they become young adults. As an IB student, I am driven to fit the characteristics of the IB profile and give back to society. What I liked most about IB is how it's changed our education system for the better. Teachers have us learning in different ways, not just answering multiple choice questions, and they encourage us to reflect on our assignments, and they push us to be better enquirers. An assignment that requires me to reflect back on is the long-term awareness project that all eighth graders at Walker Grant are to complete. I chose to spread awareness against childhood obesity by handing out pamphlets around the school and the community. Not only does this help my cause, but it lets me look back on what impact I'd made in society. Finally, to the future IB students out there, I just want y'all to know that the program is meant to help you guys prepare for a better future and become a better citizen. It's in place to remind us that what we learn is just as important as why we're learning. Thank you, and I'm Edward Velegas. Have a good night.
Good evening. I'm Emma Panetta, and I attended Walker Grant Middle School as an eighth grader. The IB program in our middle school allows students to become part of the learning process. From choosing our topic to the final project, our voices and opinions matter. My experience as an IB student is very different compared to the way I've learned in school so far. Instead of just memorizing facts for a multiple choice test, I have a chance to explore my creativity and expand my involvement in the community. I've enjoyed the IB program because it helps me face independence and many challenges yet to come. I'm able to work with any types of strategies to resolve a problem in the community of Fredericksburg, for example, helping the animals at the SPCA. I recommend that in the future, we could change the IB program by including even more projects to inspire our creativity. My advice to future IB students is to keep an open mind so we can achieve our goals. It really does feel great to have a good impact on the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name's Natalie Luffman. I'm a senior at James Monroe High School. I'm in the first IB cohort, and I must say, it's quite a lovely program. I really like it. Now, the diploma program in the IB program is quite a rigorous academic program. It's meant to help students critically analyze, use different thinking skills, and work both individually and as on a group scale to help come to more detailed conclusions and really develop new perspectives in what you're learning. So that really pushes beyond the more surface-level aspect of just memorizing curriculum and taking a test. So it's, I think, more in-depth. Now, to describe my experience as an IB student, like I said, I really enjoy it. I really appreciate the critical thinking that's involved. I really appreciate looking at different perspectives that I can see with my own peers as I work on different assignments or group projects. There is a lot of writing involved with IB, but that's just something you have to face in life. As we go on to college, I mean, like, the extended essay is a very rigorous assignment that requires about two years of research, is a four-thousand-word essay, very rigorous, but it's something that's really preparing you for college because it's pretty much like a, you know, research dossier or a research paper that you'd have to do out there in your career field. Now, overall, what I would suggest to future IB students, don't be deterred if you get a bad grade or don't do so well on assignment. Those things happen. It's just a fact of life. You'll have your ups and your downs, but IB is meant to, you know, push you. It's a rigorous program on purpose, and so you'll really get to learn your strengths and your weaknesses and just pretty much discover who you are as a student. So that's really important in the academic field, I think. And so by seeing those strengths and weaknesses, you can see, like, what you're really interested in. I've certainly found new aspects of myself that I think, whoa, that's pretty interesting. I like learning about these interests and maybe not so much about these, but, you know, that's all part of a well-rounded student. And another big piece of advice, manage your time well. There's a lot of work. You can't just review material ten minutes before the test and expect to do well. Budget your time. You will learn that the hard way. That's all I have to say. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
You want to introduce? Shortstop for success. So shortstop for success is essentially our efforts to develop a program that's an alternative to suspension. We have heard in numerous publications the need for schools to think creatively about decreasing the number of students that are placed on long-term suspension. So this effort is what we've undertaken this year to ensure that our students are provided greater support. Tonight, we have Dr. Duffy from Walker Grant and Mrs. Courtney Wheeler from Lafayette who will provide you with an overview of this very important initiative.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Good evening, everyone. Chairman Ream, Chair Ream, school board members, Dr. Melton, and city staff, and guests here tonight and watching from home. We're very happy to talk to you about some details about this shortstop for success program. We're gonna talk about how the idea kind of germinated and how we set about designing the program and set in place interventions for students, and then talk to you about the placement process, the program itself, and then some transitions. All right, so as you can see, the idea was to try to get students the support they need to avoid long-term suspensions, but keeping in mind that this is for younger students, fourth grades through sixth grade. So it was geared towards students who were struggling to be successful, and they would have a chance, instead of being suspended, to have a shortstop for building success in a program outside of the normal school day. So in the design of this program, we had many meetings, at least ten, maybe a dozen meetings of all staff throughout the school division, but specifically, we had five meetings of Dr... That included all of these people: Dr. Melton, Dr. Catlett, Mr. Ross, Ms. Dykenig, and the principals and assistant principals from Walker Grant and Lafayette, as well as behavior specialist, school psychologist, and our liaison, who is running this program on a day-to-day basis, Ms. Dawn Shelley, and she will have a para-professional who works with her, too. And one of the things we focused on were the interventions that would be required before students would be... Could be placed into this program. So we set a bunch of very specific criteria so that, you know, we would do everything we could to try to meet the needs of the students in the schools where they are, including numerous parent contacts, work with our... Implementing our PBIS system to try to promote that and provide... Make sure that they had access to the response to intervention program that tracks students as they... Teachers try different interventions with them to see which ones are successful and which ones are not. Working with teachers to modify both discipline and academic efforts with the scholars, and finally, to involve school counselors, school psychologists, and social workers, all the groups and professionals we have that are available to help our scholars. If all of that was in place and students are still struggling, specifically with their behavior and it's interfering with their academic success, the principal can contact the liaison to develop a placement conference. This placement process involves those steps, as I've said, and the placement conference itself includes the liaison, the... The principal, the parent, and additional administrators. And there is an appeal process for it in place, but the goal certainly is to have the parent onboard, that this will lead to the success for students. And I will turn it over to Ms. Wheeler to talk about the program itself. I'll click for you.
Okay. I'm gonna move this. So the program itself is going to be a three-week program, and it's gonna be housed here in the Walker Grant Center. The students will receive small group instruction in both math and English. They will also receive social and emotional skills, lessons, and supports while we're here, and this is the big portion of this program that we feel so passionate about. This is what's going to truly provide those students with the coping skills and the tools that they need to help overcome these obstacles as they face them in the classroom and on the bus and the hallways each day. We want to really be able to send them back prepared to be able to tackle these issues that they're facing. They'll also be provided lunch and then health and wellness activities throughout the day, so they'll be given a recess break so that they can get up and move around throughout the day. Once they've completed two full weeks, that third week will begin the transition week. And during the transition week, we'll have three days at the end of the week where we will slowly transition the students back into the regular classroom setting and on the bus as well. So during the three days at the end of that week, the students will be assigned a student success coach, which will basically be a mentor, that they'll be able to play a part in choosing someone that they feel they have a true connection to, that they can trust, and really build a strong relationship with once they get back to the school building. We'll also develop a behavior contract with the students that they'll follow once they transition back into the school completely, and we'll have onsite visits and check-ins by Dawn Shelley, our liaison, and the parents will also receive weekly progress reports from those students' teachers until we feel that they are achieving the success that we feel they can in the everyday school setting. Questions?
Questions, and I'll ask Dr. Thomas to chime in and anyone else.
I may have missed the grade that this applies to.
Four through six.
Four through six. Okay.
Yep. So the mentor that they're picking up to transition back, that's a staff person? Yes. So it could be, like... Any... We're allowing the students the ability to kind of have a say. It could be if we have a breakfast buddy or someone they feel they connect with that's in the school building that they could check in and out with.
that's in the school building that they could check in and out with. Paras, guidance counselor, anyone that they feel they truly relate to will definitely... those options open.
So I think it is important that they have a say in who it is and that they pick and that they have somebody in the school building. I really like that. I'm wondering how that person is... like, what information that person would have about what they've learned in that social-emotional piece? And also, how... what are their teachers going to learn about what these students have learned with the social-emotional piece so that everybody's using the same language and the same kinds of messages?
And we actually have training set up for our teachers that will be involved with those students when they come back to school. We've been working very closely with Julie Huff and Dr. Gilando to create kind of like a mini professional development for those teachers so that they can ensure they are following the same things that were being used when they're in that three-week program. So we are going to be trying to practice the same types of things in the school building.
I should add that Ms. Shelley is already making connections with students in both buildings and with teachers in both buildings, so that will be part of the process, too.
So if the student, for instance, picks a mentor to be a front-office staff person, because there are some wonderful front-office staff people at Lafayette that are also...
At Walker Grant.
And I'm sure... and at Walker Grant is what I meant, and Walker Grant. You know, like, that front-office staff person will also have the language that they're using, the social-emotional piece, and the interventions that they're using to try to manage their behavior a little differently, yes?
Yes. We will ensure that.
One last question. So how committed are we to the success of the student? Once you find out that the behavior issue goes beyond, I guess, school capacity? It could be home-related. It could be a number of factors. What do we... what happens?
Well, I know we are planning, when they're in the three-week program, especially since it's housed here at the Walker Grant Center, I know we are planning to utilize our behavior specialist and those types of things throughout the program. So if we do feel as though it's that severe, they can focus more on those behavior and social skills during that three-week program. Dr. Thomas, would you...
But also include social workers and whatever you need.
Yeah. The social workers and psychologists have been a critical piece of this. And essentially, the social-emotional piece is something that we're going to emphasize. Certainly, we want to ensure that the kids make adequate progress in terms of their core curriculum. But what we're essentially trying to do in the program is to instill some replacement behaviors for these children. So while certainly we are aware of the home situations for our kids and some cases can be very troubling, that's something beyond our control. What we want to try to focus on is our interaction, our connection with the students, and try to really hone in on some of those behaviors that have resulted in the child being recognized from the very beginning. The group that's been assembled, particularly the staff members out of the People Personnel Department, they'll be meeting with us on a monthly basis throughout the entire year for this program. So as we have students that are placed in the program, Dawn Shelley will provide a report to the group that's assembled, and we will have ongoing feedback from the behavioral specialists, as Dr. Duffy and Mrs. Wheeler indicated, the psychologists and the counselors. We also are going to try as we can to ensure that those... that the... those behavioral specialists are able to make contacts with the students, at least on a monthly basis while they're here. So essentially, we're really trying to focus on some replacement behaviors that will allow the student to transition, hopefully seamlessly, back into the building.
Go ahead.
Those students that come back into the building, they're identified as part of the program, they're disengaged from the program. When they re-enter the building and those behaviors persist, what's the next level? Once you're identified as part of the program, do you remain a part of that program? Or are you... those behaviors persist? What happens to the student?
If we discover that the behaviors are persisting, then perhaps we could look at extending the program, their time in the program. But we're going to take that on a case-by-case basis with this advice and feedback from our psychologists and social workers. They're best prepared. They're training, and those areas will rely... we will rely on that to try to provide the type of support that we can help... that will help extinguish those behaviors and make a seamless transition. We have developed a transition plan, and those staff members are a major part of that transition plan back into the building. So it won't be a transition such that the students just place back into their classroom with their teachers. We're going to follow a modified schedule back into the building so that the student will spend some time here, but some time back in the building so we can monitor some of the behaviors that were called into question initially to make certain that they have been adequately addressed. So this is something that will be an ongoing process for us and the staff out of People Personnel, like.
Oh, so I applaud any program that keeps our kids in school. It sounded a little clinical to me, like, you know, there... you know, I hear about psychologists, social workers, and I guess old school was to have community involved as well, that there are programs out there, too. And so before you finally give up, I just would suggest that you try a different approach and kind of get some of the community programs involved. But I applaud your efforts in making sure that our kids in Fredericksburg have the ability to come back to school.
If I may, to address your comments there, this has been a very interesting process as it evolved. It started off with a conversation with Dr. Catlett and I, and because we're concerned that we had a number of students who were getting suspended three days, and then they'd come back and then they were suspended five days, and then they hit the 10 days, and then another 10 days. And they weren't getting anything out of that. There was no behavior modification. Nothing was going on with these students. So this group has grown. I think our last meeting, there were 16 people involved in this group from all different walks across the school division. And this has been a group where any idea has a chance of succeeding. And a lot of them have, because a lot of us had a certain impression when we walked in there, this is going to be the way it works, and somebody else said, well, what if we try this? And it was, oh, yeah. What a great idea. At our last meeting, interestingly enough, we talked about outside agencies and counseling agencies and those kinds of things, and I'm not going to mention them because of...
Right, yeah.
But outside agencies that would be interested in working with these students outside of the school day. So when they go home and working with the home. And also, these folks have done a tremendous amount of work. You would not believe how much work they've done. And this is not one of those programs where we go, oh, this is a great program. Let's do it, and we never revisit it. They are meeting monthly to talk about, okay, this works. This doesn't work. How do we need to change this? What else can we add? And it seems like every month that we meet, we add another piece. And the amazing thing is, it's not costing us a lot. The building's here. We had the teacher to do it. And so it's all kind of... it's kind of falling together. Now, there are going to be obstacles. There are going to be unintended consequences. But because we're consistently going back to the drawing board with this, we're hoping to iron those things out. I do know that the assistant principals have mentioned in a meeting there were a number of students that had this program not existed, we would have a half dozen or more kids who would have received multiple 10-day suspensions by now. But because we're out in the school, working with those kids already, we haven't seen that.
Great, great, great. I remember the speaker during the SBA, and when he talked about his behavior issues, it was hearing from a mentor or a peer to, you know, maybe you want to include a lecture by... or a motivational somebody in the community, you know, for certain students who are continuing...
You can do so many things with this.
Yeah, right, right.
It's wide open.
Okay, great. Well, congratulations.
Thank you. I think it's going to be important how this is, I guess, like marketed, framed, you know, to both these students, but also to the rest of the school. They're going to be leaving school, and traditionally, the rest of the student body is going to think they're bad and that they've gotten OSS. So I think it's going to be really important how we are framing this so that it doesn't... that doesn't happen.
I have a question for you. How many kids can you take at one time? Or how many can you take?
Six to eight.
Six to eight.
Would be the maximum number of students at any one time. But you're going to have kids transitioning in and kids transitioning out. We don't have...
Our goal is to have zero.
Right.
I like that a lot.
And here we are, almost the second semester.
And we don't have any of that.
Oh, good.
But this is... that's the fallback, that if we have to place a kid in the program, we can place a kid in the program, which proves to me, everything we're doing up to that point is having some kind of effect.
Wonderful. Yeah.
So I just have a quick question. If you... if somebody goes into the program, do they go into it immediately, or do you have to wait till it's like a start date and you have everybody at that time? It's a continuous thing. Okay.
Well, there's an appeals process if a parent does not want a child...
Right.
But the alternative to this program is out-of-school suspension.
Yeah, we don't want that.
Yeah, and we don't want that.
No.
And it's lack of success. We don't want that. Continued difficulty, you know, not being successful or happy in school, being disruptive.
Well, I like the way you frame that you're teaching them ways to be successful. You're not punishing them. You know, it's like a, here's how you can do this and get ahead.
You can turn things around.
And at such a young age, having been at the middle school, hopefully, being able to provide these students with the tools they need to be successful at a younger age will eliminate some of the issues that we have at the middle school level as well.
And the placement criteria is rigorous. I mean, it's really rigorous, and it's required us to examine existing practices in the buildings. How are we handling discipline? What can we do to be more thoughtful and creative about dealing with certain behaviors? How familiar are our teachers with... are with developing behavior plans? Implementing behavior plans with fidelity? How well do our staff members work together and communicate in terms of a case management approach with kids? So there have been all sorts of things we've discovered to improve existing practices that have resulted in us, to date, not having a child placed through the program yet. So I think it's improving what we're doing in the buildings as well.
Are there similar programs in other school systems that you've looked at? No. So are you prepared to document and publish and...
Yes, yes, we are. We have documented all aspects of identification, the placement conference, the transition plan, and it's an ongoing process. I mean, when we meet, again, we're going to talk in more detail about the appeals process, our transition process, and we have very honest and open conversations. I mean, there's a very trusting relationship we have, and if a staff member feels like we're not keeping the student's best interest in mind, we're called out about it. And so the decisions that we make, we have to be able to justify and provide research-based evidence in terms of the approach that we feel we should take. So it's been an extremely collaborative process.
So we haven't had any students referred to the program so far?
No, so far.
So far.
So far.
So have we also not had any fourth and sixth graders display behaviors that would have gotten them in the program and gotten suspended? We don't have any...
Sure, we do. We have had students that otherwise would have been suspended.
But because we have put things in place, we helped them, it allowed them to turn their behavior around.
So we haven't had any out-of-school suspensions for behaviors?
Well, it's because we're addressing the behaviors in advance. The same behaviors last year would have ended these kids up out of school and long-term suspensions. But because of the protocols we've put in place and started working with those kids the first of the year, these kids are seeing progress in terms of behavior and achievement.
Then the answer to my question is, we have not had any.
We haven't... we don't have any in the program, but we have a number had we not started these protocols that would have been in there.
What that tells you is that we haven't seen any cases severe enough not to react to the initial interventions.
I'm just trying to find out about our out-of-school suspensions.
Right.
And what that looks like.
Right.
So maybe the next time, you can answer that for me so we can see what the discipline looks like. I'd like to know that.
And this is, is or is not for students... for special education students?
This is not for special education students.
It is not for special education.
But interestingly enough, there are a number of special education professionals on the committee.
Good.
A number.
Yes.
And they tell us when we're wrong, believe me.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
This is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, the next information item is the financial report.
Before you have the November 30th year-to-date report, and as you can see, things are running pretty much according to what we had planned. There are no unusual circumstances to report or fundamental issues in budgeting that I'm aware of. The action you took earlier tonight to pass the supplemental appropriation of prior year fund balance, once that goes through the city council's resolution, then that will be factored back into the budget as usual every year. And so you'll see a revised budget in that far-left column on the summary page rather than the original budget. Beyond that, I really don't have anything unusual to bring to your attention. So if there are any questions, I can try to answer them. Thank you very much.
Old business. The VSBA Capital Conference will be held in Richmond, January 22nd through 23rd. Ms. Holmes is planning to attend. Any other in... Any other members who would like to attend? Are there any?
We appreciate your attending, Mrs. Holmes.
Do my best.
And the VSBA Orientation for School Board Chairs and Vice-Chairs or new board members is held on January 23rd in Richmond. Since we have no new members, we did not have anyone wishing to attend this conference. And we have the VSBA Northeast Regional Forum, which is held March 21st, 2018. It will be held in Manassas Park City. More... we'll get more details available later, but mark your calendars. Okay, we come to Good to the Order. Do you have anything for Good to the Order?
It's not under old or new business, but I will be at the... in DC for our next school board meeting for the Advocacy Institute, so...
The legislative?
The legislative. Have fun. We appreciate you doing this, too.
Yeah, we do.
I will be there, and I will be fighting the fight, so.
Good. All right.
Be careful out there.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have Mr. Bailey, a second by Ms. Mel Richards. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The meeting is adjourned at 8:17.
Two-hour delay tomorrow.